Good evening. We heard a call to order, the Committee of the Hall and Special Meeting of the Board of Education, District 208. Can we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Ms. Nardi, a roll call.
Yes.
Here.
Here.
Here. Dr. Freitas, recognitions, please.
Good evening, honorable board members and the greater community. First of all, I would like to recognize our fantastic high school. This morning, we received the news from U.S. World Report that we are ranked 35th out of 700-plus publics high schools in the state of Illinois. I would like to thank the Board of Education District, our superintendent, all the great teachers, support staff, everybody that made this happen. It is a point of pride at RB. We're doing very well by working together. Very proud. Now, we would like to recognize our students and our staff. First, the math team. The RB math team had all six qualifying teams placed in the top 20 in the state at the ICTM State Finals. Here are the results of the competition. The geometry team of Quinn Hendricks, Wyatt Hoffman, Isaac Lee, Tabitha Rowia, Zach Rosenfeld, and Jane Selepsis placed ninth. The freshman sophomore eight-person team of Joe Duffy, Adresa Risha, Matt Schormann, Dylan Strobel, Quinn Hendricks, Wyatt Hoffman, Isaac Lee, and Jane Selepsis placed 11th. The junior-senior eight-person team of Nate Kissel, Ava Povrapan, Lucas Trippikas, Emma Strong, Luke Burnt, Ella Hearn, Will Sessler, and Max Wissionez, and Ray Almeida placed 14th. The Algebra One team of Joe Duffy, Sophie May, Adresa Risha, Mitch Schormann, and Dylan Strobel placed 16th. The pre-calculus team of Daniel Almeida, Luke Byrne, Ella Hearn, Mark Schormann, Val Spasak, and David Vaca placed 16th. The orals team of Sophie May and Matt Schormann placed 20th. Sophie May placed 14th out of 163 in the Algebra One competition, and Isaac Lee placed 21st out of 290 in the geometry competition. Now, I would like to call up the students to receive the recognition. First is Daniel Almeida. Luke Burnt. Quinn Hendricks. Nate Kissel. Zach Rosenfeld. Matt Schormann. You're okay. Mitch Schormann. Lucas Trippikas. Emma Strong. Dylan Strobel. Max Wissionez. David Vaca. And Will Wilkins. And last but not least, Reyes Almeida. And now, I would like to call up the math team's sponsor, Ms. Melissa Gordon. Ms. Gordon?
This was a very exciting year for the RB math team. We qualified more students for the state competition than we ever have in RB history. I always tell the students, the goal is to qualify enough students so that I do not have to drive the minibus to state, because that drive home after spending all day outside in the sun is very long. And they surpassed it and then some this year. So, we ended up in the final, I think we had 25 students that I brought down. We had a couple alternates that came just in case. Reyes Almeida was there every Friday morning practicing as an alternate, ready to stop, step in should somebody get sick or have something come up. So, these students did just an amazing job and found out we were only 41 points from qualifying the entire team this year. And since every question is worth either two points or five points, that's about one point per team or person, one question. So, I think next year, that's going to be our new goal. It's within reach, so we're going to see if we can get that here in the next couple of years. That would be my goal.
Awesome.
And also recruit more students now, right? Now that there's some excitement around math team, it was tough after COVID. So, congratulations, guys. Thank you.
Ms. Gordon, do you want to introduce your assistant?
Oh. This is my assistant. That is my assistant.
She's going to scooch in for a picture here.
Yeah, that'll be better. Adresa, sorry.
How many are seniors? How many are you graduating?
A lot.
Yep.
A lot. Seniors was our biggest group.
Thank you.
You've got to be able to do the challenging stuff.
Yes.
Good job, Ms. Gordon.
Congratulations.
Dr. Freitas, I like the new recognition. You got them coming out of the runway a little bit. It's good.
We have great student board members.
I like it, Joe.
We have a great committee engagement coordinator.
I feel bad for Joseph and those certificates, though. That's a lot of pressure you're under right there. You're flipping.
All right. You're not out of it yet, Joe.
Congratulations to our FCCLEA state qualifiers on competing at state and each earning medals in their respective event. Student Michaela Hoag competed in the charcuterie board event and won a gold medal and received most outstanding honors, which means she won her event at state. That's a state champ right there. Students Jessica Bellum and Mariah Watkins Sanders both won a gold medal in the Frosted Cakes event, and student Isabella Romero won a silver medal in the Frosted Cake events. Congratulations to all. Now, we'd like to call up Jessica Bellum. And the sponsors cannot be here this evening.
Dr. Freitas, come and take a picture with them, please. No student should stand alone there.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Just for those watching at home, the sponsors are?
I'm sorry?
The sponsors.
Ms. Bridget Walmart and Mr. Grant Lewis. Congratulations to the students who earned an Adobe Professional Certification this semester. Being an Adobe Certified Professional is an industry-recognized certification demonstrating mastery of Adobe Creative Cloud software and foundational knowledge for digital media careers, so students gain practical skills and a competitive edge when applying for college programs and future careers in design or digital media. These students are Gabrielle Nieto, Adobe Illustrator and Adobe Photoshop, making him an Adobe Certified Professional in really digital design. Quinton Rona, Adobe Illustrator. Jack Kelly, Adobe Illustrator. And Gianna Diaz, Adobe Illustrator. And I'm proud to introduce the 2024 IDEA Teacher of the Year, Ms. Patty Sarkady.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Hello again. I'm so honored to be here in front of you with these four amazing students. They've worked so hard to pass the certification test, and I do want to just say one more time that this certification test is such industry standard, which really puts them at the top of their league, which will help them get any career that they are interested in, just getting their foot in the door in any type of digital media career. And they're also getting college credit with Triton College, and they're dedicated students, and they're just incredible, so I'm just so proud of you. Congratulations. One, we just had a competition with Blight Park Elementary for a logo design for their Teacher Appreciation Week, and Gabby got first place, and his design will be on their T-shirt. Congratulations. But I'd also like to just have a nice shout-out to our IT team, because without our IT team, there is no way we would have been able to provide the certification test to our students. Congratulations.
Come a little closer together, gentlemen.
Congratulations. Good job, Patty.
Today, we honor the following students who have successfully completed the OSHA 10-hour General Industry Training Program. For those who may be unfamiliar, OSHA stands for the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, a vital federal agency dedicated to safeguarding safe and healthy working environments nationwide. Earning your OSHA 10 General Industry Card signifies your commitment to these critical safety principles. This credential not only enhances your safety awareness, but also serves as a valuable asset on your resume, potentially gaining you a competitive edge in the job market. Also, unlike some safety certifications, the OSHA 10 card holds a lifelong validity. The knowledge these students have acquired through this program remains valuable throughout their careers. Please join me in congratulating these students for completing the OSHA 10 General Industry Training Program, because these students cannot be here today. A lot of them believe in actually, you know, they work and use another certification, but, you know, they're also in sports, and also unfortunately, none of the students can be here, but please, let's give them a round of applause once I read their names. We have Sebastian Bogazuski, Lorenzo Burke, Jimmy Kaliban, Jason Clausen, Max Duznowski, Guadalupe Esquinca, Marcelo George, Jesse Gonzalez, Luis Gonzalez, Isaiah Griffin, Nathan Hart, Max Cusper, Matt Legakis, Sophia Moroz, we have Josh Danepinion, Miles Russell Barnes, Ian Spadzek, Remington Springer, and Mathis Trippikas. I'm sorry. Cade Tompkins, and Joaquin Villarreal. The teacher, Mr. Wysh, unfortunately cannot be here this evening, board. Now, to staff recognitions. This is a joy for the district, because this educator is a fantastic teacher, one of the best, I would say, in America. Ms. Sandy Chaka presented at the Special Interest Group of Computer Science Education Conference 2024 on Thursday, March 21, in Portland, Oregon. The 6C is a conference for secondary teachers and higher education professors to explore, research, innovative methods, and best practices for teaching computer science. This year, Ms. Chaka presented a special session with Dr. Jill Westerlund from the University of Alabama and Dr. Andrew Cumell from the University of Wisconsin-Madison on innovative strategies for Gen AI and CS courses. In order to present at the 6C, proposals must be submitted, and approximately less than 10% of proposals are accepted. The session was well-received by nearly 100 high school and college faculty at this conference. Please, let's give it up for Ms. Sandy Chaka. The mic is yours.
Well, I think Dr. Freitas summarized it pretty well. I think one of the most exciting moments was seeing on the screen the pictures of the three presenters. I worked with them to come up with the proposal, as well as to come up with the session topic, and my favorite part was you had University of Alabama on one side, you had University of Wisconsin on the other, and in the middle was Riverside Brookfield High School. That was pretty amazing. We also had some good recognition from one of the Google staff who was there, who wanted to get a hold of our presentation and is in the Chicago office, so hopefully, we'll be able to get even more. In addition to having our students visit Google with some of our alums about three or four weeks ago, hopefully, we'll get some more opportunities to work with them as well. All of this came because several years ago, the College Board invited me to start doing some work with them, and I really have to thank Ms. Kylie Lindquist, our assistant principal, because I was like, I don't know if I should be doing this. I'll have to miss some school days. I'll have to, you know, I'm going to have to give up some time, and she said, no, this is exactly what you need to be doing. This is going to help you grow, and it's going to help our school grow. So, really, without Kylie encouraging me, I don't know that I would have gotten to this point, so thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chaka, can we get a picture with the student board members?
Good job, Sandy.
Thank you.
In honor of Professional Appreciation Day on April 1, and Administrative Professionals Day on April 24, we are recognizing all of RB's educational support staff for all they do to make RB the exceptional institution that it is. Please help me recognize the following educational support staff. When your name is called, please come on up. Ms. Mayela Aranda. Mr. Earl Baum. Ms. Brittany Barrent. Mr. Brian Brennan. Ms. Caleb Bushemi. Ms. Carrie Cantwell. Ms. Sherri Shalado. Ms. Margaret Collins. Mr. Mike Connors. Ms. Catherine Pugin. Mr. Lorenzo Cordova. Ms. Julia Crockett. Ms. Denise Delgado. Mr. William Del Rey. Ms. Veronica Diaz. Ms. April Engelhardt. Ms. Raquel Figueroa. Ah, Raquel's here. She's working security today, folks, okay? So, please pardon that, board, okay? She's out there protecting us. Ms. Colleen Fisher. Mr. David Fisher. Mr. Steven Forsythe. Ms. Gabriella Gonzalez. Ms. Carla Geiton. Ms. Melissa Hammer. Mr. Louis Haldago. Mr. Hunter Hughes. Ms. Sherri Kosek. Mr. Stephen Cuss. Ms. Don Lisack. Ms. Merritt Lorimer. Mr. Vito Martino. Our very own Ms. Mary Ann Hardy. Robin Palermo. Mr. Ed Petrick. Mr. Rick Pofus. Mr. Jeffrey Cantana. Ms. Myrna Cantana. Ms. Jen Reynolds. Mr. Dave Rollicek. Mr. Mark Rugi. Ms. Angel Casalto. Mr. Tony Santucci. Ms. Donna Sifferman.
Got a winner. Winner.
Ms. Heather Spring. Mr. Philip Stefanich.
Good job, Phil.
We have Mr. Michael Stoclosa. Ms. Mary Ann Swan. Ms. Kim Thomas. Ms. Isabel Uyowa. Mr. Joseph Urbansky. Ms. Lauren Vogel. Mr. David Wackrow. And last but not least, Ms. Sylvia Wiggington. If you're stuck in the present, we will have a picture. If you're here and you were called, our support staff, if you can make it, please.
And I would just say thank you to everyone who's here and not here. This is really the heart and soul of RB. You guys get everything done, so you're very much appreciated. Is Mary Ann coming?
Is Mary Ann? She's working.
She's good.
She's here. She's going to be left, so.
Duty called for Chubbs.
Yeah.
Honorable board member, that concludes our recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas. I'm going to move into reports, and our Student Association is here. Is this your last report of the year?
Uh-oh.
Oh, my goodness. You could tell us your names for one last time. Going to force you to do public speaking.
I'm Anna Lopetra, and I'm Vice President.
I'm Hazel Hall, and I am the Treasurer.
I'm Naomi Dallas, and I'm the Secretary.
So, a couple of us weren't able to come today because of sports and everything, but we wanted to highlight a couple of things that students in SA have been helping out with in community. Starting off, we are in the third week of our Pop Top collection. We currently have 75 pounds of Pop Tops that we've counted so far, which is about 95,000 Pop Tops donated just so far this year. The last day to bring in Pop Tops is this Thursday, and then after that, we'll bring them to the run with Daddo Tops, and we're still getting to our goal of 3 million donated in this school, which is great. And then, we've had a lot of volunteer opportunities so far this quarter, three of which would be the PTO-sponsored Day of Service in Riverside, which there was a great turnout. Lots of sports teams went, lots of SA students, and just a lot of students in general helped plant trees and flowers and mulch around surrounding areas, which is a great turnout. Similarly, we have the Brookfield Project NICE coming up on May 4 at Kiwanis Park. We kind of spread out and hit a couple different parks during Project NICE, so we're looking forward to that, and we hope a lot of SA students helping there. And then, last Sunday, the Ecology Club had a cleanup in the Waabancey Woods, I believe that's how it's pronounced, and just did some restoration with their trees and things. And then, Ecology Club and Mr. Monty also worked together to put no idol signs around pickup and drop-off spots around the school to help eliminate emissions on the school, which is amazing. And then, lastly, a couple of weeks ago, we had a few students approach us about a possible collection for Scare's, which is a company that collects books and used records to sell, and all their profits go to other nonprofits and also schools to provide educational materials to lower-income places, which is amazing, and we will be collecting Spanish books for them, because that's something they have a larger need for, because they get a lot of books in English, but books in Spanish is a big thing that they're looking forward right now. And we're going to have a couple collection boxes in different areas around the school, as well as all the Spanish classrooms, and we're hoping that this is going to be something we can continue for the next few years and work with Scare's with that.
Thank you.
So, next Wednesday, May 1, is a very fun, exciting, SA-sponsored event. We are having our third annual trivia night. It's going to be a great night with obviously trivia, some cool prizes, a free raffle, and, you know, hopefully, just a really good atmosphere, fun time. We currently have a total of 11 teams set to participate. However, we are doing sign-ups this week, so we're hoping to get more to join. Tomorrow, Wednesday, is also another very exciting day, as we are hosting our 2024-2025 Student Association Class Officer and Executive Board election. We have a number of contested positions, so it should be a fun, exciting race. All freshmen, sophomores, and juniors are able to participate in the vote, and the election results will be announced on Thursday.
We have our third blood drive of the year on May 3, this next Friday. We're going to hope to increase RB's total pints by, or from 101, because that's, we had 55 pints donated in November, and in February, we had 46 pints, and if we get all of our spots filled this May 3, we will be able to donate 33 more pints. So, that's very exciting. Right now, we had sign-ups. We are having sign-ups currently with the trivia night and all of our lunches, so that was today, and it will be tomorrow, too. During finals, a small group of seniors will be going to each middle school that will be coming into RB. So, like, for example, me and Hazel are going to Hauser along with a few others, and we're going to be able to talk to eighth graders and just give a little bit of advice to them about coming in as freshmen, and we will make suggestions for preparations like this summer and answer any other questions that they have. Along with that, we will remind them about freshman orientation, which is going to be August 8, and then, we will start, we've already started planning for that. It is going to be on 10:30 to 11:30 on Thursday, August 8. And so, Lucy, who is not here, she's a junior right now, she'll be a senior, and she'll be, like, planning that with Ms. Yol and Mr. Divas. And then, of course, we have prom this Friday, and we're all very excited about it. Yeah. Are there any questions?
No. Thank you, guys, for your service. It takes to step up and do this. And good luck with the election tomorrow. Do we see the new Student Association members this year, or do we see them in the fall?
I think last year, you come in May, right, once it's determined, correct?
Probably one of the first ones in the fall.
Okay, and you guys do a soft handoff to them, and, okay, great.
So they don't come before the summer, though?
I don't know. No, they have a little, like, presentation to all of the staff at RB, and then they'll come here in the fall.
In the fall, okay.
Well, thank you all, thank you. There is no president's report, district goals update. This should be a discussion.
So this is a more detailed administrative updates on the district goals. There was a, Board Member Gasko had asked if we were going to receive a more detailed report, and typically, that would be in either April or May. We elected May this year. So historically, what we've been doing is just putting the one-pager in the board packet, which the board typically sees. And then, as I notified you again today, there's additional tabs that the administrators have been keeping their notes in progress on. So those have been added to the report. I sent those out again this morning. Apologize for that, so.
Can I give a little context, Dr. Stink?
Sure.
Just to level set for those who may not have been following the board for the last couple of years. In 2020, besides the pandemic, we did work on setting a mission statement for RB. Those of us that were on the board at that point then adopted the mission statement in early 2021. And then this board, for the most part, worked on developing the goals and to support that mission statement. And on an annual basis, those goals are reviewed by the board and fleshed out, and various tasks identified that we are asking the administration to focus on in support of the five district goals. So this will be the second year where we've had district goals, and we've had this discussion and the regular placement of it in our board packet and for discussion. And then I would anticipate this summer, we would work on any revisions to these goals as needed, based on anyone's interest or changing focus from any of the board members, and then also work on supporting the administration as we come through with the various tasks that support the goals, if that makes sense. So I just wanted to like leave that as context, if we're not just, it's not just a big document we look at. There's a very significant byproduct of work that went into it. We had meetings with the community, had a lot of community input, had a fair amount of, we had a Saturday session where people participated and gave us their feedback, and that's really the document we're looking at here today.
Yes, so if you look at each Board of Education goal as a general broad goal, so like if we look at the first goal, which will be the first tab, that is the blue tab, is explore how to maximize curricular days to foster academic rigor, new opportunities, and social, emotional supports. So the 2324 SMART goal was implement a student information dashboard that facilitates tracking and analysis of students, academic and SEL data to dispatch appropriate resources and support to ensure college and/or career readiness for all students based on their post-secondary plan. So Dr. Freitas, do you want to call up the administrators you have assigned to this goal?
Yes, I would like to call Ms. Kylie Linquist and Ms. Beth Augustine, two of our assistant presidents.
And so what I've asked each administrator to do is just to speak briefly on the different progress that they've worked on throughout the year as it relates to the board goals and the individual steps that they were using to track their SMART goal for this year.
And I think I would encourage the board to jump in and ask questions, as we would, just so we can have more of a dialogue if there's something specific somebody wants to drill down on, so we're not saving our questions to the end.
Sounds good. Good evening, everyone. So one of our action steps was to use early warning system data to identify trends and then use the appropriate resources and/or other interventions. So we gave the Signs of Suicide screener to our freshmen in September. This is the second time that we have used the screener and intend to continue using it. We administered two SEL Panorama surveys that were administered to students in October and another one in February. And this data that, from the surveys, is available in Panorama for teachers to see, based on survey results, so they're able to see if students are struggling with executive functioning, if they have some issues making relationships. And then we use this data to place students on our small team, which are interventions with counselors, social workers, the deans, and the school psychs. And if there were students that we had concerns about, then we would add them to small team and figure out interventions for those students. We also used this data to determine our groups that are run by the social workers and the psychs on a regular basis. And overall, as we looked at the data, our students were very healthy in the social, emotional learning. The two areas that we focused on were emotional regulation and challenging emotions, and those were groups that, again, were run, offered to students through both first semester and second semester. And our groups are usually six weeks, and they pull students from a different period each week so that they are not missing the same course. And then the psychs and the social workers also implemented SEL lessons based off of this data through freshman English classes and also through health classes. And we will continue to do that in the years to come as well.
Another action step for this year was to track intervention progress for our students in our intervention courses. This has become infinitely easier now that we have been able to administer STAR assessments in both reading and math, and we have been able to, using Panorama, make that data accessible to even teachers who don't necessarily administer those tests and don't see the test results in the teacher dashboard. Also, all teachers, as Beth mentioned with the SEL data, have access to that student data for all of their students. Kind of taking that a little bit further than just beyond the intervention courses themselves, we've actually allocated .4 FTE this year to pulling students out of PE classes or study hall to give them some additional intervention supports based on that consistent fresh data that we have the ability to access. Using that Panorama dashboard, our interventionist is able to track daily progress with students and enter her intervention students as a class so that we can pull data on those students, so teachers can see that data as well, so they can see how students are making even daily strides towards college and career readiness. Again, all of that being tracked through Panorama, so we're, really, the Panorama becomes the vehicle by which teachers are able to really see and understand not just the academics but the SEL, as Beth mentioned, where their students are falling in those areas, and be able to intervene at a variety of levels. We also looked at an action step to utilize the implementation and the integration of data from school links via that Panorama system to identify students who have a potential proclivity or interest or potential toward a variety of different opportunities. Dual credit opportunities have been a goal of the board in previous years, so we're continuing that development as we have the systems to really look and see what our students want to do, what our students are doing, and what our students are being successful doing. Despite the fact that we're still waiting on that clearinghouse data, we are seeing growth in the way that we are expanding those opportunities for students. Our dual credit opportunities have more than doubled from this year to next year, and we have some more that are pending approval right now. That's kind of a constant process for us now, where we are pretty consistently seeing teachers submit their resumes, their CVs, their work experience to find out if they are able to be approved to teach dual credit. One of those 15, actually, two of them, the dual credit options for next year are PE, so they're the first wellness dual credit. A lot of our partner schools around the surrounding areas have had that. We know when students go to a four-year institution, sometimes they get hooked with that. I had to take a bowling class, right? You have to get in there, and you have to take some kind of general education PE, and we're able to offer opportunities for that. Expanding our dual enrollment opportunities as well, we have, with Triton tweaking the offerings this year, we're seeing a little bit of increased interest there. Eight students for this current year, 18 students for next year. And we're also expanding, just in general, we are seeing the continuation of the partnership with the Plumber's Union training program that was established with some support from the board specifically. So we're really seeing those advancements in how we're looking at the curricular day and maximizing those opportunities. We're also really with the new leadership structure, the last action step there, utilizing PLC time, kind of not necessarily differently but more effectively. Our division heads have been instrumental in this process because they really are the touchstones that are into those PLC meetings and really leading those meetings with fresh data. And we have consistently throughout the year directed the focus of those meetings, so the division heads really have their hands in what the planning is and what items their teachers are looking for. So it's more of a guided analysis through not just test scores and specific data relating to academics, but also it can be related to SEL and what are some of the interventions at the tier-one level that we need to do in our classrooms. We've also worked a lot on identifying and allocating department and content time to kind of be proactive in understanding what changes to curriculum need to be made or what slight adjustments or major adjustments need to be made based on a clear understanding of where our students are and where we are looking for them to go, and continuing to use professional development time that we have to continue the vertical alignment that we've started so that we are certain that we are addressing whatever gaps our students might have to the greatest degree possible.
Is the board clear on all of the acronyms that were being used?
I would want PLC. I have an idea of what it is.
Professional learning communities.
I knew it was professional learning, but I couldn't figure out the.
Yeah.
So when we have our late start every Thursday, that's when the teachers, three out of those four Thursdays of the month, one of them is a faculty meeting, and the other one is PLC time. That's when they can work in their either content area teams or as a department, student data, writing Common Assessment, writing Curriculum, things like that. Professional learning communities. Anybody else? SEL, social emotional learning is the big one. That was the Panorama dashboard that Beth touched on.
Our student advisors may have had some questions.
It's minor, PD, you refer, like, PD time.
Professional development. Any questions or comments from the board as we look at this first goal and what's been done this year?
No, thank you. It's good to hear that the data is now, we're able to, with the Panorama, so it's nice to hear how you're able to use that.
Yes.
Get it into the hands of all our.
Yes, any teacher, any teacher can see all of their students' results from the SEL survey. And the data that Kylie mentioned, that Bridget Watson is putting into Panorama when she's administering these interventions, it's very helpful because the counselors can do that as well, and they can see how often they're going. And then if that student is a student that we are monitoring through small team, we can see, is that intervention actually working? Are they actually showing up? There can be follow-up phone calls to home, so, I mean, it's a really, it's, you know, it's, I know, it's like the Cadillac of platforms, but it's really worth it.
Who's the, do we have somebody, if somebody's struggling, like, how do I use this, or how do I, you know?
Like a tech support person?
Yeah, like. If someone is unable to access, like, one of the faculty.
Right.
Pushba Winbush, who is one of our school psychs.
Okay.
We use her, utilize her as an MTSS coordinator, and so she really has mastered the use of Panorama. So our plan is, first institute day is to give an overview, and then we'll make sure to train new teachers, any new hires, how to utilize it. And then any faculty that want a deeper dive and are unsure, and we're going to continue to kind of do those trainings, whether it's through PLC time. If that's not convenient, we'll provide after-school, before-school opportunities, because I think we'll just continue to use this and keep pushing more data into this platform. Skyward is not very friendly, so they can actually see attendance, they can see behavioral referrals. Everything that's in Skyward is downloaded into Panorama.
It's really the most comprehensive way you can, you could think of to look at a whole student and really get like a more rounded picture, when, you know, in Skyward, you can see, oh, this kid hasn't been here, and this is what their grades. You can dig a little deeper into that in a new way.
I got one last follow-up question, then, so, and I don't know if this is more for our administration or even, do we have an expectation, then, since we have this amazing tool, that everybody's utilizing it, and, you know, how are we holding our departments accountable to access and use it?
I think it could be something that could be worked into PLC time, that there's an opportunity, maybe very specific times of the quarter, that this is a time you're going to look at students specifically after surveys are administered, that that should be a time that students, teachers are looking at their overall student data.
I would suggest, I was thinking along the same lines, Laura, this was, the action step this year was a lot about implementation. And so the action step for next year is, to your question, how is it being pushed out and utilized, and are there gaps in knowledge or something that needs to be addressed from a technology or a staffing perspective?
And it's so easy to use. Again, how often it's being utilized is something that, I mean, we can see logins, we can see when students, when teachers are accessing it. But I think we find unless you make something designated time to get it done, it's hard to get it done. And so if we're actually specifying, okay, this is a PLC day that we're going to have teachers look specifically at Panorama data, I think, and have division heads and teacher leaders help coordinate that, I think that would be a great action step for next year.
And then I, a follow-up to that was, I was just going to ask, I know I've heard some positive from parents about the intervention pullouts, specifically having Ms. Watson work with both math and English for kids that are struggling. But I think the next action step would be like tracking DF rate. You know, we talked about freshman on track, I don't know if that's, but I'm just saying, like, it would be nice to be able to say, like, hey, we identified 40-something students in the first semester that needed additional math and English support. Of those four, I'm using roughly, you guys know how I work, I just rough, of those 40, 28 ended up getting a C or better, or 20, you know, this many percent ended up passing their class and turning their grade around, or, I think that's kind of what some of the next steps the board's going to want to see is, all right, how are we tracking this, and how are we, you know?
So our plan as our student services team is to make recommendations for students to receive those interventions through Bridget as soon as we start school next year, you know, because if they get off to a rough start, then it's really difficult to get caught up. So if we had students that we knew were freshmen, we'd make sure that they are on the list for interventions next year. And the other thing we're going to try and add is AP potential and get that downloaded into Panorama as well so that teachers can have access to that when they're looking at recommendations for upcoming school years.
I would put my teacher hat on and say that I would imagine the utility or the power of Panorama is going to come up at the first ability to use it meaningfully. So while I totally am on board with the idea that we want to encourage that use, until a teacher is in a situation trying to figure out why a student might be struggling and able to utilize that to better understand how they can understand the student and then engage, that's that first key in, is I don't imagine, speaking for myself as a teacher, not looking to add things to my plate to do.
Yeah.
But when there's a tool that helps make what I do easier, that helps. So I would hope that it's not just that PLC where it feels forced, because forcing me into it, or forcing anybody into it, is going to feel like, ah, it's there, but it's that first time that it has utility, which would be that big turning point to use it more for its ability to engage students, so.
For example, we had teachers look at trends within classes, you know, sometimes you get a class where there's students that are really struggling with executive functioning, and so this teacher saw that majority of her class, that was one of the areas that they were struggling the most. And so she knew that it was something that she had to take steps and measures within her class to sort of embed those skills more so than some of her other classes. So that's kind of an example that maybe it's not just looking at individual students, but how can you look at your classes and maybe some trends?
Yeah, my thinking, just along that way, I was also thinking that not only would it look at specific students, but I think it could be a tool to help our educators evaluate the course. Sometimes the course or the activity works, sometimes it doesn't. And, you know, with using the tool, it's helpful information to the educator to say, you know, they might want to make some tweaks or something. Not always just at the individual student, but at the larger. student, but at the larger program at kind of level of, you know, of what they're teaching. Could be a unit, whatever. I would think probably at the department level where they have the meetings, that, what do you call them?
The division head?
The professional community, right, the division head, probably somewhere at that level, they might next year come up with some kind of idea of how we're going to monitor that we're using the tool and how it's working for us.
So I think we'll see these action steps over the summer. So these are all some good, good food for thought, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second goal is?
Second goal, which is the pink tap to the board is our communications goal. And at this time, I'd like to call up our new communications person, Ms. Kylie Fletcher. The general board goal is research opportunities and methods to increase two-way engagement with all stakeholders of the RBHS community. Smart goal for 2324, create and implement a new position to address public relations, community engagement for the district and the high school. The first action step of the 2324 school year is create a position and job description based on the survey results issued on November, on the November 2022 survey that went out to the community and all stakeholders. That was completed and posted on May 12th of 2023. The second action step was to post a position, review applicants, develop a committee to interview and select the finalists to recommend to the Board of Education. Two rounds of interviews were completed in June, a board approved a candidate in July, and Ms. Kylie Fletcher officially started August 1st, 2023. The next step, Ms. Kylie, why don't you take?
Good evening, board members. So I'll provide an overview of the tasks and the projects I've accomplished in the first year of my role. So one of the priorities that I had or we had when I first came here was our email communication. So this is that constant contact was the best way to communicate with families, helps us streamline communication so families know exactly who the email, who the email is coming from and not just some random text, but they have headers that says, oh, curriculum and instruction or student services, so they know which department it's coming from, which parents especially have expressed to me, since I, parents usually prefer email, have expressed to me, has really helped them know which department it's coming from and knowing that it's coming from the school. So yeah, the headers are from each department and each subject line comes from each department as well.
Hold on Kylie, Mary Ann, can you slide up the goal a little to the next slide just so that it unlocks the, there you go.
And next, another priority that we had when I first started was handling crisis and weather-related communications. We did have some weather closings this year, so in collaboration with Dr. Skinkis, our information is communicated immediately through Skylert, which is our emergency communication system on our website and our social media. So as soon as Dr. Skinkis makes a call to close the school, those messages immediately come out to students, parents, and staff. And on April 11th, I did attend a safety training at Brookfield Zoo Chicago to collaborate with members of the police department and the fire department and other members of Cook County emergency systems to learn the best ways to communicate in the event of an active threat at the school. Additionally, we do have messaging ready in the event, unlike the event of an active threat at the school, in the event that messaging does need to get out rapidly and immediately to families so we can keep them informed on what is going on. Social media is something that I have, I say increased this year, increased the effect, effective, effectively increased this year. Like, for example, this morning, we found out that we are number 35 in the US News, the best high school. We found out information out this morning and we were able to make a post about it in the early afternoon. So I feel like I especially have been putting information out and timely information, we're updating Instagram, X formerly known as Twitter and Facebook. And I feel like a lot of students especially have said that they use Instagram for communication. And we have some of our website groups that were like, oh, we don't really check the website, but we're really on Instagram. And I was like, oh, that's good to know because I am actively updating the Instagram. Same with Facebook, I feel like a lot of parents are on there and they really appreciate it if their kid is being, you know, posted or appreciated, they comment congratulations, you know, so it's really good to see and I feel like it's fostered more of a community. The website is an ongoing project, as you know, websites are sometimes difficult to tackle, but we have met with teachers, admin, student groups, and parent groups to improve navigation on the website. I feel like meeting with student groups and parent groups has been especially helpful, especially because I'm not a student or a parent, so it is really helpful to hear their feedback. For example, parents have said they mainly go to the parents tab when looking for information. So making sure we have summer school offerings or attendance or cafeteria information, all that important information ready for them to see has been really important. And also eliminating things that have been in four places at once has also been a priority and making sure people, parents, just parents and students and staff just know where to go. So we've been meeting with all those groups and that is, like I said, an ongoing project, but we've removed, removed outdated information, we've reorganized tabs, making information easy to find, trying to keep it to three clicks maximum, so. Another thing, one of the things I'm most proud of in my first year is the Positive Pride Newsletter. I can't tell you how many people have come up to me and said, wow, I love it, I love the colors, I love the photos. People's like, I didn't, I didn't know this was all going on at the school. Positive Pride Newsletter is the weekly newsletter that is sent to all staff, students, and parents about everything going on each week at RB. And community members also have the opportunity to sign up on the website or in an ad in the landmark. And like I said, I've gotten amazing feedback, I hope to continue this every week coming forward. And all the archives are online, so if you, you know, missed an email or if you want to go back and look at something, they are online for people to see. Additionally, I did the quarterly newsletter, which is called RB Review. So this is our quarterly newsletter that summarizes all the key main events and stories that have happened from each quarter. And something that I really like about the quarterly newsletter is that digital copy or, excuse me, physical copies are dropped off at the Brookfield Riverside and North Riverside Village Halls and libraries. So if people aren't able to get it online or they aren't subscribed to our newsletters and they can get a physical copy and they're really nice and I feel like people really appreciate the physical copies. We do continue to use Remind. Our students have expressed that they do like using Remind. They, Remind is a communications platform that you can get texts to your phone, so students can put in their number or have the app and it sends a text right to their phone. And they like that, they use it for other things like athletics and activities or classrooms, too, a lot of teachers use that. So we send that out to students who prefer the text option on their phone, like SAT testing reminders, or if there's a state send-off, they just like getting that right to their phone. RBTV, I've been collaborating with RBTV teacher Matt Holdren on video series such as Beat the Bulldogs, our forward series that we just had with Superintendent Dr. Skinkis, which will be coming out tomorrow, and our in-the-classroom series and other initiatives. And the goal for next year is to increase highlighting some of those in-the-classroom initiatives and other things that are happening to so more of the community can see all the great things happening in a video format. So that's definitely something we're going to be tackling for next year. And as you saw today, recognitions, Dr. Freitas and I have increased the number of student and staff recognitions at board meetings as well as the general process for recognizing students. So I feel like we've improved on the process that we've had. And like you said, a lot of applause going on today, so I feel like it's just a great way to highlight, you know, all the important staff and students at RB. Additionally, I do attend weekly cabinet meetings with Dr. Skinkis, Dr. Smithana, and Dr. Freitas to discuss communications and community engagement efforts and any issues or concerns or ideas that I have on a weekly basis. And that concludes my overview of my first year.
Thank you. And the last action step will be that Kylie, Dr. Freitas, and myself will meet to evaluate this year and then identify a focus for the upcoming school year, and this will occur in May or in June.
Okay, thank you. I mean, this was the single biggest thing we heard from the community. I mean, this was, this topped across all sections that communication. So seeing, I mean, I've had a kid here for seven years now and the, the evolution of communication this year is, is really spectacular. So I would say thank you.
Thank you.
I loved the daily bark that comes.
Oh, yeah.
Very quick.
Yeah.
And I was absolutely thrilled to see the print copy at our library. We had the best library around at Brookfield's library, it's amazing.
Yes, it is.
And I'm just wondering if we can get a couple of those print copies kind of like out at the farmer's markets, you know, like summer they have kind of like little information booths?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So cool. People love to look through the pictures and, you know, and if they get a copy, it's like a show-off piece, you know? This is what we do at our, at our school.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good job, Kylie.
Good job.
Thank you. I was just going to say thank you, it's been nice, I'm a Facebook generation, which makes me old, but that's easier to see what's going on and it's been appreciated, so thank you.
Good job Kylie.
Thank you.
Dr. Freitas, I believe your goal is next.
Okay, so board members, last year, we presented our Equity Action Plan and this year, I have the privilege of presenting.
Excuse me, Dr. Freitas, I think we have the wrong one up there, right? This is the budget and goal.
Correct, it should be the, the green one, Mary Ann, there you go.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Again, good evening, board. Last year, we had the pleasure, right, of presenting the Equity Action Plan. This year, I get to talk about some of the accomplishments that came from that. The strand teams have been meeting independently since the beginning of school year in review of the specific objectives and tasks found in the Equity Action Plan. Below is a summary of each group's accomplishments.
Dr. Freitas, before you start that, can you read the board goal and then the smart goals, so just we stay in consistent format? Do you have that or do you?
Yes, I do, yes.
Okay.
So the board goal was continuing ongoing training and engagement in DEI. And the smart goal was that district, the Delt will be developed and facilitated by Dr. Dubiel to create an equity action plan for the 2020 school year. We created the plan and this year, we implemented that plan. Strand Team Number One, we're still with systems, we deal with hiring, recruitment, defining equity chaired by Dr. Skinkis, Dr. Smithana, and Mr. Tinoco facilitated in partnership with Dr. Adubiel, the Board of Education Diversity Equity Inclusion Training in the fall of '23, which many of you attended. The Strand Team also co-organized the We are RB Hiring Recruitment Video, which showcased our diverse staff, activities, and opportunities. And lastly, Strand Team Number One co-founded the DEI Question Bank. And those questions we've been using in interviews, questions such as define equity, how do you connect with students of diverse backgrounds, give an example of equity practice, those are some of the questions we've included in our hiring questionnaires to hire diverse, the DEI-minded individuals. For Strand Team Number Two, Teaching and Learning, dealing with teaching strategies and curriculum.
Can I just interject, I want to ask about that. So those are DEI questions are embedded in the interview questions.
Interview questions, correct.
And is that active or is that?
Yes, it is active. We started, yep, we started this year. Strand Team Number Two, Teaching and Learning chaired by Ms. Kylie Linquist, co-led by Ms. Lindsay Minow, Mr. Baldes, and Mr. Helgeson, supported teachers inclusion of diverse artifacts, teaching methods, authors, and content in curriculum and our greater school. Things as supporting blended learning, a third of our teachers are using that methodology and we're supporting them. You know, ensuring that, you know, our English teachers and other such areas have diverse authors of all backgrounds. So students read not only the modern, you know, and the culturally diverse literature, but also the classics as well. We've expanded early college opportunity, included student choice and voice. Teachers have been leading institutes where they're teaching, you know, successful best practices. So we've really been supporting, you know, our entire school practice and a big shout out to our Strand Team Number Two, and currently we're still developing a curriculum map, a universal. Strand Team Number Three, Dealing with Student Voice, Climate, and Culture chaired by Mr. Dave Mann and Ms. Melissa Carey, Mr. Zillinger, and Ms. April Brown, founded the Student Equity Leadership Team in September of '23. The SALT, as they are known, co-created a survey and prioritized two areas needing attention, the free and reduced lunch process and procedures, and leveraging the cafeteria to include, to include and support all we do at RB. So that came from that student group. Strand Team Number Four, Dealing with Professional Learning, and by the way, what was really interesting about this group is that they created their, their own email. So whenever people see Delt PD, you know, you know, you're getting either a part of article or a video about DEI. The Professional Learning chaired by Ms. Augustine, who's here present today, and Ms. Jessica Marritson, developed an equity-minded survey at the beginning of the school year. And some of the things they took out from that is we want more knowledge, more, more articles, more research about DEI, we want to learn more. They've emailed us after all the school year, articles and educational videos, they created their own email. And some of the articles and videos they sent had to do with overcoming biases, challenging attitudes, impact of racism in students. So we've been receiving that throughout the year. And also the team made professional development suggestions for the 2425 school year. You know, one example is the State Equity Symposium, which a few of us had the opportunity to attend in October. The goal would be for more staff members to attend this October coming up. Last but not least, Strand Team Number Five, Dealing with Family and Community and Agency chaired by Mr. Venegas, Mr. Mack, Mr. Hockes, Ms. Fletcher, who joined our team this year, and myself, we solicited feedback from existing parent organizations. We talked to the PTO, athletic boosters, and music and theater sponsors, and they want to support an increasing communication, multilingual communication, and supporting an event. And I'm proud to say we've been present and supporting our parent orgs in their mission. We reviewed communication efforts. We were looking at residency docs to make sure everything's available, not only in Spanish, but that we leverage technology so people can translate themselves as well. We researched community engagement opportunities. We visited Anokai Laan, we went to Monde Line High School, and we saw a parent university, fantastic. It's a three-hour kind of session. Beyond, you know, it's like, I would say coffee with the principal on stage, where you have special guests, you know, about the community, right? You know, you have teachers kind of share their piece, you know, Learning Sky, we're learning Google, you have students giving testimony. So I'm proud to say that Ms. Fletcher and I and the team were working on a parent university. You know, beyond what school, how can we get those resources from the outside here so we can have our parents learn about them? Again, to the board members, you know, I'm so proud of the work that we are doing and I truly hope that we are honoring the mission. You know, DEI, you know, there's no end. It's ongoing, ongoing revision of our practices, of our teaching and learning, including students, including parents and PD. So we are doing that and we're continuing that journey. Other action steps there that were clear and pretty much done from the get-go, the, each strand team received their progress monitoring tools so they can update. It was updated quarterly as well, on October 13th, December 22nd, March 8th. We checked in with Dr. Adubiel, we had a first semester kind of end December 14th. And this month or next month, we'll be reevaluating our objectives to work on future steps for the 2425 school year. And Madam President, Mr. Superintendent, that concludes my portion of the goal.
Questions or comments on this one?
I do have a question. As you've been meeting with Dr. Adubiel, has she given any feedback as far as what lens is the group using for DEI? Are you doing it through the lens of student learning, student achievement? Has she encouraged you to look at any achievement gaps by, by student categories, by student groups? I appreciate the DEI goal.
Yes.
But it does seem a little general or not focused. Maybe next year, that would be something to consider, just to, just make some improvements on it.
On the, the goal or the task, just so I can kind of take a note for myself as we go through this?
Not the, I mean, the goal is, you know, as I'm reading the goal.
The goal is general.
It's just continuing. The goal is general.
Correct, correct.
The smart goal for this particular year is that.
To develop.
That Equity Action Plan will be developed. Just wondering if next year it could be refined?
Yes.
Or if any consideration has been given to refining?
So like for 2425, it would be focusing the Equity Action Plan specifically on achievement gaps and impacts or?
Or whatever.
Whatever the group decides.
The group decides.
Yes.
I don't, I don't want to dictate, but I think I would suggest that the group along with the consultant gives some consideration, some strong consideration to refining the goal.
Yes.
Because this is great, but to what end, right?
Got you, yeah.
Let's, let's start thinking about that.
No, I think that's a fair recommendation, Madam Vice President, you know? And I just want to reiterate that everything we're doing here, when, when we started, right, this work impacts academic achievement. I believe and we need to make it more specific, but everything.
Because I didn't, the academic achievement I hear?
Got you.
I was just curious where that was.
Of course, Madam Vice President, yes.
But our smart goal was to, to develop this team and get it, you know, to give it birth.
Yes, we're up and running, yep.
And I would, I think we have fair evidence that you've achieved that.
So now it's just next step.
Right. So now you're talking about 2425.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing. 2425, what's the next step?
It's been created, it's been done.
Yeah, so.
Capitalize or let's add the momentum.
And that was the, you know, smart goal, and so just to recognize that, I think you've done a really nice job in achieving that and, you know, that huge goal and the different activities, even. and, you know, that huge goal and the different activities, even put a shout out for our association, our School Board Association, even the presenters we had from North Berwyn utilizing, you know, equity and how they transformed the district there and student learning. We're doing many things that are now starting to embrace different lenses. And, you know, it'll, as you keep working towards that goal, it'll just happen more and more.
So, I think, much like with the first goal, this summer, as we look at the SMART goal build-out for '24, '25, this is a good place to start.
Well, then, they'll define a new SMART goal, but the idea was that you presented evidence that you've met this milestone, and so, thank you very much. That was huge.
Agreed, thank you.
And thank you to the board for leading by example, doing the training, and you guys, you know, are leading the way. So, thank you, board members.
What is our next goal?
Dr. Smetana, the finance goal.
Everybody's favorite.
Say the best for last.
It's not last. The Board of Education goal related to finance was maintain responsible budgeting while also investing in staff and programs directly affecting student outcomes. And then, the specific SMART goal was to conduct an analysis of budget expenditures to ensure resources are committed to programs directly affecting student outcomes while ensuring the June 30 expenditures are at or below the board-approved budget level. So, obviously, we're not at June 30 yet, so this is ongoing. But in regards to the first two action steps in the budget that's posted online are the typical pie charts that break down a little bit of the budget and provide an analysis. And then, in regards to the third action step, monitor the budget and make sure we're providing resources and committing them appropriately to programs related to student interventions and initiatives. That's ongoing throughout the year. Budget requests, or sorry, budget reports are provided to the board every month. And then, additionally, as needs come up, administrators or staff meet with me throughout the year, and it's my job to figure out if that's something that we can, one, if we need to, if we need to accomplish that this year, and then, if so, how to make it happen financially. And then, specifically for this year, in regards to the interventions that we have and items that we've provided for students and staff, I've included a list, which includes some of the things you've already heard about tonight. Dual enrollment, we allocated money for both student tuition and transportation to Triton. Dual credit, we've provided money for teachers to complete certification requirements from Triton outside of the school day. There's a lot of heavy lifting that goes along with that. ELL resources, this year, we allocated an additional .6 FTE for ELL, as well as moved the stipend to Group A. We added Kylie Fletcher, who you heard from, our communications person, and then also allocated money for all of the projects that she talked about today, like posting in the landmark, redesigning the website, et cetera. Throughout the year, we added six athletic stipends that were due to increase student participation this year that were not, that are not contractual. We added four stipends as a result of the extra-duty Stipend Committee, which include acapella, pop band, ping pong, and tech club. We leased an additional minibus for after-school activities, which should be arriving this spring. We increased substitute budget for additional professional development related to peer evaluation and blended learning. We were able to secure the digital equity grant, and we used that to update some RBTB equipment for the new RBTB teacher. We covered related costs for practice SAT tests for all juniors so that they could become familiar with the online version of the test before having to take it when it really counted. We, in late summer, early fall, we added an additional .4 FTE for fine arts and .6 FTE for special education. That was not in the original budget. We implemented division heads and teacher leaders this year. We budgeted for an additional athletic trainer through ATI. And then, we continue to support the blended learning initiative through flexible classroom furniture when needed to support the initiatives within the classroom. And then, lastly, the landscaping project to provide outdoor seating area for students, and it's nice that the weather is breaking so that we can see students begin to use it, and some classes have been going out there during the school day as well. Are there any questions related to my report?
Thank you.
Okay.
No, you nailed that, as usual.
And I believe that the last goal, Ms. Ruska, we had put that on hold, right?
Yes.
This was about the property because of some indication of the-
Still working through some things with our neighbors. As general as possible.
But were you able to get one meeting?
Still working on some things with our neighbors. We've had a couple meetings.
Well, so, I mean, your SMART goal there was to conduct at least one meeting.
With the promise of many additional, how about that?
Right. And so, as we move into the new year, okay, but, you know, baby saps, but we're in that list.
It's been a long haul on that one, right? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Freitas. Any more comments on the goals? I mean, my thought was we would revisit the 24, '25 goals, I believe, in a June timeframe, if not July. This gives us a good baseline to work from as we try to provide some feedback and the administration comes up what they believe to be the path forward for next year.
So, with this presentation, in each of the SMART goals, they put some very specific language, clear targets. And, you know, I think we've had sound evidence that all those clear targets were made. And, you know, just really want to give a shout out to the staff for meeting those targets, for focusing on those targets in a clear way and communicating those. That, you know, as a board member, you know, I recognize that, and I think our community is recognizing that. And it's a nice way to kind of say, year one met. And, you know, as that process goes on and they develop maybe a new goal for next year or something, but, you know, you feel so much more confident going into the next year knowing you hit year one and you've got it and you got your sea legs on. So, Dr. Skinkis, I think, me personally, I'm not speaking for anyone, I think the staff and your team have done really an amazing job.
Thank you. I would agree with that 100%. As you saw tonight, they did a great job showing what they're doing, and so, we'll continue to work with the board, May, June. And like I said, I'd like to have them in place before July, just so that they can kind of head into the new fiscal year and planning. So, we'll start looking at how we can refine the SMART goals, next year's SMART goals, so that there's more specific now of, okay, now that these things have been implemented, what are we going to specifically attack or try to improve or identify to improve? So, I'll work with the team on that. But thank you, Laura.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We can move on to your report, Dr. Skinkis.
Superintendent Report. General District Update, Culinary Lab Conversations and Planning Related to Culinary Lab are ongoing. Dr. Smetana is handling that project, so she'll provide updates in her Assistant Superintendent Report as that, things, more things become to fruition. Some members of the administration, faculty, and myself did do a site visit to West Leiden High School to walk their culinary labs to help us generate some design and implementation ideas, and also to help us make sure that we're identifying exactly what it is we need and are not putting any additional types of equipments or fringe things in there that don't need to be to drive up any budget to keep costs at a minimum. Recently, I spoke with the Superintendent of LT regarding their staffing practices. Dr. Smetana and I are scheduled to meet with the Director of Human Resources to discuss in more detail how they implement their administrative procedures related to staffing. So, I will follow up with the board in May. On April 11, the administrative team members, myself, Dr. Freitas, Mr. Mannan, Ms. Fletcher, participated in active shooter training at Brookfield Zoo Discovery Center. Obviously, this is something Ms. Fletcher referred to in her communication goal and something that none of us can ever be prepared for, but we are going through regular training. And, you know, it's something that we're always making sure that our plans are in place, we're working with the local municipalities. The Cook County Emergency Response Team actually facilitated this event, which included first responders from all the local municipalities, county and state. It was split into two trainings. So, the first part of the training was, how would all the municipalities and the zoo respond to the school if there was ever an active incident at the school? And the afternoon training was, how would the school respond and react if there was ever an active training, active event at the zoo, you know, while school was open for our actors, after-school activities, which we experienced, I think, two summers ago? So, you know, it's always great to get everybody together and look at communication and look at our practices. So, that was a really good training.
Can I ask, Dr. Skinkis, how much, how many of our administrative team were involved in this, or what was the representation?
It's listed above. So, Dr. Freitas, myself, Mr. Mannan, and Ms. Fletcher-
That reading is fundamental, I apologize.
We attended, but throughout the year, myself, Dr. Freitas, Mr. Mannan, Mr. Petrick, all of us have been working with the county and the local municipalities and putting pieces of this together. We did a table talk exercise in October and a reunification plan, so we've been doing this training with Cook County throughout the year. Dr. Smetana and I have been having ongoing discussions with representatives from the RBEA Executive Board about a possible contract extension. The current agreement is set to expire June 30 of 2025. Should something materialize, I will update the board accordingly. Lastly, the most recent press policy packet is included in the agenda tonight under New Business. I also included Board Policy 6:310, which will need some updates to reflect all the work the administration has been doing with dual credit and dual enrollment. A new piece, a program that's Triton implemented last year, I guess, last year, is a dual-degree program, is being offered by Triton, provided some general background information in the packet under the policy agenda items. Most, if not all, the high schools participating in DVR either have a student or will have a student participating in this program. It allows a student to complete their high school diploma and their associate's degree at the same time. This trend is, has started to grow nationally. The Student Services Team has talked to me about implementing and taking the next steps. Dr. Freitas and Ms. Augustine, some counselors attended an event at Triton and brought back information. We thought that we may need an additional year to do some planning, but we think we have a student or two that could possibly qualify and benefit from this program. So, I'm going to ask the board to look at that policy. There's not, it's not a commitment on our part because the student is responsible for the fees and tuition and transportation, but I wanted the board to start looking at the policy, so if that does come to fruition, it does align with our policy.
So, funny you should mention that because this week, while at York High School, talked with the social worker. DuPage County has an active program just like this, and she gave me the name of it. So, a bus from College of DuPage comes to York High School, picks up juniors or seniors who have submitted an application and who qualified. They get on the bus, they go to then COD, and they complete their associates and their last two years of high school.
So, we are doing something similar right now for our dual enrollment students. And the way we have kind of pieced this out is dual credit are more or less classes that we can offer here where students can get dual credit. A student can come to us, and we have certain criteria in the policy that if they identified another course at another college or university or junior community college that they wanted to complete for dual credit, there's some flexibility for the principal and student services, assistant principal to approve dual credit. Dual enrollment, the way, the approach that we have taken dual enrollment when the board talked in their board goal about expanding curricular opportunities is, we want to be able to, things that we can't offer here, or because we're a school of 1,600, a single high school district, and we don't necessarily have the numbers or the enrollment to hire a full-time teacher and some of the career pathways or other courses, even as far as possibly language programs. So, we are covering the course fees and tuition for our students to take those classes at Triton. And so, that's through the dual enrollment. So, the way we're looking at this dual degree right now, because those students would be taking classes that we do offer at RB, is the dual-degree program right now would be at the responsibility of the student and the parent, but we would still have a policy to allow that to occur, where it's a little bit different from the dual credit and dual enrollment. So, we've kind of created like a three-pronged approach to how we continue to grow opportunities for our students. Lastly, what I'd like to talk, just real quick, Superintendent Advisory Councils, it's getting to the end of the year, so facilities will need to meet. Mary Ann will be sending out information. That's Laura and Nick, or excuse me, Ms. Ruska and Mr. Novak, to talk about the May to review summer projects, facility rental agreement, and hopefully, more detailed plan of the culinary lab. Finance Advisory, which is Ms. Zalis and Ms. Locke, will need to meet in late May, early June to review the tentative budget for FY '25. Policy Advisory Council, which is Ms. Gasko and Ms. Locke, will need to do a meeting before, bless you, before the May, preferably before the May board meeting, but if not, we'll do it before the May COW to review 6:310 and the new Press Plus packet. And that concludes my superintendent report for this evening.
I have a question, sorry. The dual-degree program that other high schools participated, do they charge their students tuition and transportation costs as well, or does this school cover?
I will get a list and figure that out.
Just trying to figure it out.
I'm not sure if all do or don't.
Okay. It might be cost prohibitive to some families.
Okay. Well, the way that we discussed that was that if those students, since they still need to enroll at RB, if those students qualified for the free and reduced lunch, we would be able to provide some assistance.
Some.
Depending on how that gets laid out. We haven't, that's where we're at right now.
No, that's fine.
But so, we did think that was an angle to where, if that case presented itself, that gives us an opportunity to help those families.
Just looking at it from an equity lens.
Sure.
That's fair. Any more questions or comments on Dr. Skinkis's information? No? Dr. Smetana, please.
Good evening. Tonight, I'll provide the Board of Education with financial information through the month of March, which represents 75% of our fiscal year. I'll begin with the monthly summary report, which shows that the total operating revenue for the month was $10,220,082, with 94% from property tax and CPRT, 3% from evidence-based funding, which is our state funding, and 2% from local payments. The total operating expenditures for the month were $2,720,333, with 67% towards salary and benefits, 19% on purchase services and other expenditures. It's primarily a payment to LADZI, which is our special education cooperative. That's the portion covered by our grant, and 5% on transportation. The monthly financial statements are next, and you'll see the summary of revenue shows that the district has received 91.9% of our budgeted revenue for the year. This percent is much higher than this time last fiscal year at 69%, but that is just due to the timing of the property tax payments. The summary of expenditures shows that the district has spent 50, or sorry, 75.9% of the budgeted expenditures, and that's not a typo, it's the exact same amount as this time last fiscal year. And then, as always, I've included for the board, the statement of revenues and expenditures for the month of March, which are our board accounts, as well as our student activity accounts for the month of March as well. And then, lastly, I have a few other items, which are all just informational for the board. The first is, I wanted to update the board on some upcoming purchases, the first being the weight room. So, through discussions with the wellness staff, as well as our athletic coaches, it's come to our attention that there's a need to upgrade some of our outdated and unsafe equipment in the weight room. The RB Sports Boosters will be assisting the district with this purchase as well. The pool, the starting blocks are the original blocks in the pool from the 2008, 2009 renovation. They're approximately 16 years old, and the life expectancy of the starting blocks is 10 to 12 years old. Since we installed them, we have reconditioned them once in 2016. So, the district will need to replace these within the next year or so, and I would like to arrange for this purchase to fall under this year's budget, if possible, so I'm in the process of obtaining quotes and looking into the installation process. So, I will update the board accordingly.
Dr. Smetana, those are not eligible for safety bond dollars?
I can double-check, but I, my guess would be no. Both purchases-
I would assume no as well, but I thought I'd ask.
Both purchases also fall under the bid threshold, so I don't know if it would make sense to go through all of the work to do that. So, they both fall under the bid threshold, they're in compliance with board policy and would be accounted for in the existing budget, but they're larger purchases, so I wanted to call them to the board's attention in advance. advance, especially since before they would just show up on a board bill. As Dr. Skinkis already stated, and stole my thunder, the Facilities Advisory Council will meet before the June board meeting to review the rental agreement that we do on an annual basis, along with the summer building projects. We're currently collecting feedback from the staff on that, but we anticipate replacing the banner of flooring, putting in an ADA compliance sink in the existing foods lab, building out additional storage for the costume closet for the Fall Play and Spring Musical. So it's items like that, that Aremark will complete for us throughout the summer. And then, lastly, I wanted to inform the board that I'm in the process of securing new drivers' education vehicles for the upcoming school year. So beginning in May or June, there'll be a slight increase for the new cars. Our current dealership no longer has sedans. We only have SUVs, because that's the direction that Ford is moving in. And so that's one of the empties for switching over. And that concludes my report for this evening.
There were no questions submitted, I don't believe. So any questions from the floor?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Smetana. Dr. Freitas, you and the student advisors. It's all yours. Who wants to go first?
So, starting off our student advisor report, for teaching and learning in the month of May, 2024 AP exams will be administered over two weeks in May, May 6th through May 10th, and May 13th through May 17th. And then, 2024 second semester final exams will be May 20th through May 23rd. And then, continuing on for school, culture, and operations, in the month of April, Friday, April 26th, will be prom. It would be held at Oak Brook Hills Hilton. And then, for the month of May, for Friday, May 17th, it will be senior sunrise at the stadium from 6:00 to 8:00 a.m. Students are encouraged to wear attire representing post-secondary plan. And then, for Friday, May 24th, graduation events will be graduation rehearsal in field house starting at 11:00 a.m., which is mandatory. And then, senior picnic in the field house following graduation rehearsal. And then, ending off for graduation events would be graduation in the main gym. And then, seniors must report by 5:30 p.m. and then-
Moving on to activities and athletics, just a quick preface, all the senior night start times listed are a rough estimate. We advise showing up early to secure seats and make sure you don't miss the ceremony as-
Very wise. Yes.
Some groups only provided the start of game time, so we gave rough estimates. With April, tomorrow, Wednesday, April 24th, RB's Got Talent will be in the Little Theater at 7:00 p.m. Thursday, April 25th, the Band and Orchestra Spring Concert is in the auditor- whoops, sorry, auditorium, starting at 7:00 p.m. as well. We also have two senior night events Thursday, April 25th, being girls lacrosse senior night in the stadium at 5:30, and boys water polo before the 5:00 p.m. game, so around 4:30. And then, Monday, April 29th, is the girls water polo senior night in the pool before the 5:00 p.m. game, around 4:30. Moving on to May, Thursday, May 2nd, we have the choir concert in the auditorium starting at 7:00 p.m. We also have three senior night events that night. We have boys tennis on the tennis courts at 4:00 p.m. At the same time, we have girls softball at Eller Park, 4:00 p.m. And then, boys lacrosse in the stadium before the 5:00 p.m. game. We advise getting there around 4:30. Friday, May 3rd, is the girls soccer senior night at the stadium before the, or after the JV game, sorry. That'll be roughly 6:30. We also have the multicultural fair in the cafeteria at 6:00 p.m. on Friday, May 3rd. On Sunday, May 5th, mariachi club was, is invited to perform at Peach Avenue Barbecue at 5:30. Kayla, is there anything you would like to add on to that?
It's, well, as you know, it's the first year that we have our mariachi club. And adding on to that, having already been invited to somewhere outside of like school is very important and very exciting. We will have some songs, some newer songs, and then also some of the past songs that we've already performed. But I still recommend to go check it out.
Congratulations.
Good job.
It's exciting.
What time is that?
That is, it starts around 5:30, so.
Moving on, Thursday, May 9th, is the Apollo Awards Ceremony and Concert in the auditorium starting at 7:00 p.m. That's a music department ceremony where students are awarded and celebrated. Then, Friday, May 10th, RB's Rock Band has a concert at the Jam Lab, starting at 7:00 p.m. Monday, May 13th, boys volleyball has their senior night event in the main gym around 5:00 p.m. before their 6:00 p.m. game. And finally, Thursday, May 16th, boys baseball has their senior night event at Eller Park at 4:00 p.m. before the 4:45 game. And that concludes the student advisory.
Thank you. Is this your last meeting?
Next one.
Uh, next one.
Next one. Okay.
May 14th.
Just wanted to make sure we weren't missing anything, missing our goodbyes, and you'll get your survey and all that kind of stuff. Okay. Thank you. Dr. Freitas.
So, April 26th, this Friday, we have Institute Day. Big shout-out to Ms. Lindquist and our division heads. We're putting this together. Our teachers will be receiving PD on situational awareness by Westford, and thank you, Mr. Mannan, as well, for bringing them over. We'll be doing our state mandated PD, and Mr. Helgason and Mr. Dibis will be leading teacher demonstrations. Summer school starts in the month of June. We offer, and I linked here, but, you know, we offer some credit recovery opportunities in core academic areas, English, math, science, social science. It's in-person via self-paced computer modules, and they will be supported by certified teachers in math, English, and special education. We have two courses for advancement. Drivers at registration in person tomorrow, Wednesday, April 14th, in the Little Theater, starting at 6:00 p.m. That is a hot class. So to everyone listening, all the parents, please make sure you're here tomorrow. It does tend to fill up. We have several band camps, RB TV camp, Camp College, Academic Workshop, Bridges to AB, Bridges to AB. You know, we have a fair amount of offerings for our Bulldogs. And registration did begin a few days ago, April 19th. Under school culture and operations, tomorrow, we have coffee with the principal and the faculty cap, starting at 9:00 a.m. This Saturday, the 27th, we will host Dancing with the Chamber in the auditorium at 7:00 p.m. This is our second iteration of the event. Dean Alberto Hakes will be dancing. He's the eighth act of this year. I am not on the platform. I'll be sitting down. I am a judge this year. You know, so I can't wait to do that. But I mean, if you can, folks, come. You know, I believe tickets are $30 with a $5 discount. Everything's available on our website, but it is a good turnout. You know, I mean, I know the auditorium was packed last year. So if you want something to do with your family, if you enjoy dancing, if you enjoy our school community, please come on by. In the month of May, May 8th, we have the cap and gown distribution in the atrium during our lunch period. The 8th as well, we have senior awards night in the main gym, 6:00 p.m. by invitation only. On the 14th of May, we have the senior exit survey administered in our English classes. The 14th, we also have the college commitment ceremony in the main gym. This is a morning event for our RB athletes that will be playing in the next level. On the 16th, we have the local scholarship breakfast issue in the auditorium, 7:30 a.m. by invitation only. And on the 16th, after school, we have our yearbook distribution in the field house, starting at 3:05. Residency 24 just opened up, April 15th through May 15th. New to our residency process this year is the uploading of our resident tax using Skyward. Once approved, RB will email families and link to schedule an in-person appointment during the July in-person residency days. And what's neat about Skyward, if you use Google Chrome as a browser, you write click, you could translate everything it says on Skyward in, you know, plethora of languages. And I'm actually working with my team to kind of get like an instructional video out there, so parents can see. You know, if I'm a Spanish speaker, I can read in Spanish and upload the proper documents. Under activities and athletics, June, we begin our athletic summer camps. Registration began on April 2nd. Camps pretty much run throughout the summer. And what I'm proud of is open, several of them are open elementary and middle school students. So not only do we think about our student athlete, we think about our feeder programs. We think about the greater community. So I'm really proud of our athletic department, all of our coaches, our athletic directors, our assistant athletic directors, everyone who makes that happen. And that concludes my principal's report.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas.
Any questions or comments from the board? No? Seeing none?
Spring.
It's busy spring?
It's a full spring.
Yes. Feeling this one. Visitor statements. Do we have anyone here to speak tonight? Want to come on up? I'm going to read a quick statement, and then if you could state your name, once you're seated. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent.
I'll put my hand up when you're at 30 seconds down this row.
I think it's less.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Melinda Yocknen. I am a resident, 20 years of Riverside. I've got three kids, all who've gone through our RB. My youngest is a junior playing lacrosse across the street right now. I love this school. We've had a great experience all the way along. I really appreciate the work you do, and just, and tonight just reinforces that. I'm here today to lend my voice in support of having three full-time music teachers. As a resident homeowner, taxpayer, it's clearly in my interest to have RB seen as a great place to send your kid to school. You can imagine my concern when at a work event last fall, I heard two different parents talk about moving out of the district because of what they had heard rumors about RB's lack of support for the performing arts. Their kids are still in grade school, and these parents were actively making plans to move into the LT side of Brookfield. I certainly tried to dispel their doubts. My oldest went through the music program here, and I, you know, I just, yeah, can't say enough about it. But in these past few months, I've instead begun to have some of my own concerns as I read about the ongoing reluctance of the board to approve a third full-time music teacher. From my point of view, the full impact of a thriving high school music department is difficult to quantify. How do you measure its value, and the impact it can have on a school or residential community? Turns out, a lot of people have measured this, and there are some clear benefits beyond the academic ones. Music creates a sense of unity among performers and with the wider student body. It can create that, what is it, the two-way engagement with the community. It stimulates creativity, opens up teenage brains to innovative thinking. A thriving music department gives a place for students of all kinds to belong, and it gives the means for RB to reach out to the wider community. And in 2024 especially, there are so few things left that can unite us the way that music can. You can't make this happen, in my view, without a qualified, passionate music teacher. And it seems obvious to me, at least, that you can't get that teacher to stay long enough to build that thriving department if you only offer them a part-time position. You are so close. In the scheme of things, it's just not that much money for the incredible benefit it will bring, in my view.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda.
Hello. My name is Joanne Bashak-Konkey. I am the mom of two band students, one of whom is in jazz ensemble this year as a senior. I'm back here to speak to you for a third time. I want to take a second to look each of you in the eyes. I'm tired of repeating myself. I shouldn't have to. You work for us. We've told you we want three full-time music teachers and two separate jazz classes. We've shown you that hundreds of people in this district support funding our current three music instructors as full-time teachers. We've shown you that we are underpaying and understaffing compared to other districts of similar size and composition. People have shared their stories, past students, current students, parents, about the positive impact this wonderful music program has, and how detrimental it is to have a revolving door of instructors. We've told you about how two jazz classes make learning and performing at different levels possible, enabling our students to thrive, as they did this past week at Jazzapalooza. This event gave students the opportunity to form their own ensembles, to choose their own music, to practice on their own time, and even to work together with madrigals to make Jazzapalooza an amazing experience for all. It's time for you to do your jobs. Now, I realize that many times your jobs are thankless, and that you are besieged with complaints. But if you are not listening to those who employ you, if you're not doing the task assigned, then expect complaints until you comply. Three full-time music teachers, two levels of jazz classes. This is your task. Make it happen. Or don't expect to be back here after the next school board elections. Do your job. And if you don't want this job anymore, then do the right thing on the way out the door, and make sure we have our current three music teachers paid a full-time salary and two levels of jazz classes. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Let me sign my thing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening.
My name is Cara Kesselring from Brookfield. I have a daughter Iris in choir, jazz band, and theater, as well as many other activities here at RB. I'm here out of transparency, as well as an eagerness to keep you abreast of the hard work the music and theater sponsors are doing. Since we last spoke, the music sponsors hosted our first, very successful, all-district music and theater teacher meet and greet at the Chuchu Restaurant. This was just a few days ago. We invited every music and theater teacher from the surrounding communities, including District 94 Kameric, District 95 Brookfield-Lagrange Park, District 96 Serving Riverside K through 8, District 103 Lyons, St. Mary's School, and District 208 RB High School. This event was entirely imagined and planned by music and theater parents, again in the attempt to work toward our shared goal of increasing enrollment in music classes at RB. Through events like this, our hope is to nurture the working relationship between our music and theater departments and the feeder schools, to build a stronger alliance, and to discuss our vision and need of three full-time music teachers at the high school level. What we learned is that in the past, there used to be a robust articulation between RB and the feeder districts, but presently, there is little to none. So as a parent organization, we took it upon ourselves to reignite articulation with our event. We wanted to hear from all the community teachers on not only the number of students they have involved in music, but also gain insight on the types of classes and extracurricular clubs they're offering, the curriculum and best practices they follow, and the relationship they have with their administrators. By gaining this knowledge, our RB music educators can better plan for the incoming students and be prepared for building on their skills. Music being an applied arts is very much like a foreign language, which builds on prior knowledge to grow a larger music vocabulary, so ensembles can work on more challenging material each subsequent year of education. I was frankly surprised to learn that the administrators from RB and the feeder schools do not meet regularly to discuss continuity in music education from fifth-grade band choir orchestra up through the high school. As you know, we've been doing a deep dive this past year into music programs at comparable high schools to RB. We've presented you with facts and research about correct size for music ensembles and offered to bring in experts on the subject. We've seen both pros and cons in education cohesiveness in communities with K-12 districts versus communities like ours, 9 through 12. But it seems like our school is in a silo, resistant of learning about the other districts. We've also learned that this board has an advisory council for curriculum. How often does this council meet? What is their function? Can we hear what sort of issues they tackle? Are they meeting with other music educators and learning from their subject matter experts? Sadly, the music educator world is fully aware of our dysfunction and dissonance at RB. RB. At our meet and greet, we heard stories of COVID taking a toll on their programs as well, but they are coming back now stronger than ever. RB needs to be prepared. That's why we're actively working to build bridges between the districts and learn what works best. I challenge the board to put the same energy towards building a bridge within the arts in our educational community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jane Selepus. I was one of the people recognized here for Mathletes Tonight, but I'm also here to be a reminder. This is starting to get very repetitive. I've probably been to like six board meetings because of this and honestly, it's kind of wasting my Tuesday nights. Like, it's fun to listen to all of this, but it is getting repetitive. Um, I'm here to be a reminder of the students that this is affecting. I am a person, you know? I'm not just a number. I'm a person who takes a variety of classes, like pre-engineering and psychology and things like that. And I know of so many people and just students who have expressive personalities. And I just want to remind you that we are not only numbers. Like, we are students here and it really is affecting us. And we deserve to keep and build connections with our music teachers. And so we have to treat them better so then we could keep them. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Jim.
Anyone else this evening? Okay.
I have someone at the leave. She left me an audio file. Can I play that or?
I don't think their policy does allow that.
Okay.
Can they convert it to written and then email it to the board?
I don't know. I couldn't do that. I wasn't able to.
Okay.
Yeah. Is there a policy room that you can't do audio files?
I think our policy is in-person testimony or written testimony.
I'll have her write it in.
Thank you. That'll be helpful. Any additional discussion items from Board of Education members?
For tonight?
For tonight? No? I do have a couple that'll pop up when we go to the policy manual, so I'll get to that in a second. Old business, life safety, capital improvements, sustainability. I don't think we have any further action tonight on either of these matters, Dr. Skinkis, but correct me if I'm wrong.
Nope. Dr. Smetana?
No, no updates at this time.
Okay. Thank you for keeping it in the board book. We do have textbook adoption tonight. Were there any questions?
Ms. Langquist? Can I come up and just give them a quick review of anything that they need to be aware of, please?
I think I had a question when this was first arose and then Dr. Freitas answered it, so I didn't have anything additional, but if you could give us an overview, that'd be great.
Pretty standard fare for this year. Our Read 180 is something that pops up frequently. We split the cost between Read 180 or for Read 180 between instructional technology and textbooks. That is a place where we recover some money in student fees. We're looking at dropping off a four-year payment to Discovery Education for our textbook and science. Next year, we are looking to pilot a new curriculum in math to do an assessment of whether or not we want to continue with Carnegie Learning or whether we want to pivot and go in another direction. And then, as you can see in the subsequent years of the plan that I shared, we're into the phase now where some of those textbook licenses that textbook companies moved toward, you can buy a hard copy of a textbook, but you're always getting the license as well. It's an excellent moneymaker because every four, five, six years, you have to re-up. So we're starting to see some of those things come along and that's really like, that's kind of the finer point. So for the year one of the plan, which would be for fiscal year '25, we're right at around $33,000. These are all projected across, of course, especially when you get deeper into the plan as we're kind of projecting based on what our current numbers are and projecting based on current costs for textbooks.
Could you just articulate a little bit why you're looking at piloting another math curriculum? Because from what I understand about the Carnegie Learning, it had a, you know, that continuum, you know, starting way, you know, in elementary school through high school. And I think Riverside is using it, right? So, and we had hoped that some of our other feeder schools would also embrace it. So what is the impetus for even looking at another one?
We've looked, we've been using Carnegie since, I want to say, prior to when I got here. So I want to say we're around year 10 with that. We're still seeing in our math scores some skill deficit in our students. And so as we've used the program specifically with some of the functions of the program, for example, the Mathia function where students do practice within kind of a self-paced, self-graded module, we are at a point through our vertical alignment and through kind of our analysis of our curriculum and our test scores, we are at a point where we feel that we need to know for sure that this is the best resource for us. Because we're not seeing a situation where we brought this resource in and then it made measurable difference in how our students are receiving information, how they're receiving curricula. We also have some feelings that Carnegie is, from what we've seen, better at an intermediate level and it kind of tops out at a certain point in terms of its functionality and how good it is at delivering that skill and getting that growth from the high school years. So we are partnering with a company who is actually giving us a year's full of free resources to pilot so we can make a more informed decision and really make sure that we're doing what's best for our students in that area, especially when we're trying to grow so much in math.
I would agree. I've seen that program since junior high. My kids, the feeder school, adopted it. And it's a little tedious. They get a little bored. They just want it to be, they just want it to be over.
You go into a math class and you hear that they're doing their Mathia and it's like, oh, right. So we just want to do our due diligence to making sure that we're really giving our kids the best.
I mean, if it's what you end up with, that's fine, but it's...
What is, and that's your student who, they don't like it?
Well, he does it because, you know, we say you have to do your homework and this is homework, so he completes it. But it's repetitive and it's the way it's written. I think they want it done in their format versus, he can get the answer, but he has to follow their steps. So if he misses a step and doesn't do exactly the way the AI wants it to be done, then he gets backtracked.
It's like getting tripped up.
And he's like, I know the answer. I'll show my work, but I can't figure out what you're asking in terms of... So it gets frustrating to the student and then it turns them off to math and then they don't do well, they're not excited, so.
Because at that point, they're not even learning. They're just guessing because they want to be done.
They just want to click, 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 click.
I mean, those are valid explanations that are helpful to hear. You know, if the tool is so cumbersome that the curriculum is not useful.
And I think it's just, it's so many. Right? And I don't know if the teacher has control over that and he knows sometimes he says, oh, that module's not open, we don't have to do that one, that sort of thing. But when you're in the module, I think you're just stuck with how are the modules set up? So, so good luck.
Thank you. Any other questions on?
This is a first read or a second read?
Second read.
Okay. Ms. Gaskin, would you mind?
The Board of Education Township High School District 2000 County, Illinois approves the adoption of the following textbooks for the 2024-25 school year. Carnegie Learning Algebra I, Geometry Algebra II, Carnegie Learning, copyright 2024-2025, Read 180 Real Book. I always get caught up on that. Mifflin-Harcourt, how do I pronounce that?
Hope.
Hope and Mifflin-Harcourt, copyright 2024, as presented in the April 23, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second, second for Ms. Locke, then we get a roll call, please.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Raska?
Yes.
Flack?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Vanos?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to new business, we have a new press plus policy issue for a first read.
Thank you, Kylie.
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
So again, I touched on this a little bit in the superintendent report. I also put in the policy 6:310 into that press plus packet, so please look at it, submit your comments. We'll get the policy group together before the May advisory, either the May Cow or May Business, depending on time. The packet does not require approval until June, so we have some time on that. I also included the information from Triton in regards to the dual-degree program as a separate attachment under this agenda item.
So if the board would indulge me, I'll just ask for my items taken a little bit out of order because they do track with policy. Under Roman 12, you've got consideration of items for future meetings. I did add to the agenda for the, if the board is so inclined, is the reviewing the press policies, which are normally those that IASB has worked with the state and they are moved forward and they're on a cycle, a four- or five-year review cycle. Board Policy 6:31 and Board Policy 8:900 are unique to RBHS, so I thought it would be appropriate to review both of those policies just as a matter of diligence at the same time. They both relate to things that have come up here at the board from public comment and otherwise. One is the minimum course enrollment policy. One is the parent organizations and booster clubs. So if the group could take a look at those at the same time, I'm not suggesting any specific changes are needed, but I think it would be a good matter of diligence to look at them at the same time that the other policies are being reviewed.
Could you?
Typically with the board press, the minor changes just come in a table and then, you know, we spend a lot of time discussing those, but...
Right, right. But also, they, you know, they have that tagline at the bottom saying it's, you know, good practice every five years to renew this and make sure it tracks with, it's in compliance. Because these are not statutory board policies, they were created by this body 10 years ago, however many years ago, that'd be good practice. It was 6:31 and 8:90.
6:31 is the classes under 20 board approval, so I will follow up. I have that meeting, Dr. Smetana will write up a summary and I'll present it at the May board meeting in regards to like, you know, I think the music sponsors have brought up that LT does it a little different. I did speak with their superintendent already. They do not have a designated board policy related to class sizes. It's an administrative procedure that they do right now for practice, that they just bring to the board classes under 18. So I'm going to meet with these, Dr. Smetana and I are going to follow up with the assistant superintendent or director of HR. He actually handles that process, so the superintendent told me we could reach out to him and talk with him to specifically see if there's something where they're doing differently that maybe we're not considering.
I think we heard...
So I'll have that summary in there.
Thank you. But I appreciate you doing that.
That policy was really budgetary policy?
Right, right, but it's, my point of bringing it up is it's one line, right? And we heard from public comment that LT has a different policy. I looked for LT's policy. They don't have a board policy. We do, we are unique and it's, obviously we know the history of it, but I think because we've been having these discussions, it's wholly appropriate to take a look at that and make sure this board is not suggesting any changes at this point or has some changes.
Yeah, I think it's great to bring up for discussion that, you know, we talk about its purpose and, and, you know, we also do combine it with an administrative process of whether or not we accept classes under 20. That was just like, kind of a guide.
No, of course. And I think we get a very robust memo from the administration that talks about that larger policy, which is not captured. So I think I'm putting it out there because, again, we've had these discussions and as we're looking through the various mandated changes, this is one that would otherwise not come under regular review. The other one was the 8:9, which is parent organizations and booster clubs. I know that was written a number of years ago and I, for one, wanted to confirm that the administration, you know, continues to support all the parent organizations, which we know they come in front of our board on an annual basis and provide, you know, the various metrics that Mr. Welch would talk about, right? But also is the role of the administration and the parent organizations laid out in that policy? It's a kind of a question I put to the group. I don't have any specific changes, but it falls under that. While we're looking at policies, let's look at these two home role ones as well. So that's my suggestion.
While we're looking at policies, are there any other board policies that meet the five or 10-year threshold that haven't been reviewed that we should be...
The five-year, the press policy identifies for us in each press packet every time a five-year review is dealt. So anything that ends in a one or a unique number other than zero or five is like our own policy. So actually, 890, there is a general policy, not statute, but a general policy that press offers, and they do, anything that ends in a zero or a five, they review those every five years.
Okay, so I may be out of line on the airtime.
They do provide that to the press.
Just curious, so we're going to review these two. Are there any others that need to be reviewed?
I think it's probably a good question, but a bigger project.
Well, just because if we're going to do these two, are there any others?
I don't think there's any that are RB-specific because I'll go through again, but I think when you see something that ends in like a one or a different number, that means it's specific to the high school only, right?
Right, but...
So I don't think we have any other ones.
Because then it's going to seem like we're picking on these two policies?
Yeah, I don't think we have any.
Just curious to see. Okay.
I will do a review.
Thank you.
Well, I don't think it's like picking on them. I think if there's ever a reason to look at them again, that's our job to look at them.
So again, let's do our due diligence and find out if there are any others that may have been forgotten.
But I will say the 631, I think, was brought up by the, some of our public comment about being other policies and we should look to...
And we are.
Add some specific language, so I'm sure that's probably why you're asking.
Well, that was why I brought up 631. It wasn't meant to be a wholesale review. The only one that I do know is, because of our experience on the board, is unique, is some of the supporting documents on filling a vacancy.
Right.
Those are, there's, you know, there's a statutory...
But those, I think, are procedural, right?
Yeah. So that's, there's those kind of things embedded in various points. And I would suggest that all of us, as we're looking, I mean, I refer back to the policy document. Every time I'm looking at the board agenda and kind of understand what's in there, if something ever comes to mind, I think this is the venue to do it. We have the policy advisory committee look at it. These two were just top of mind because of public comment we've been hearing of late and also because there is a press policy on the agenda anyway, so the group will be meeting.
Can you say it one more time?
6:31.
It's in the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
6:31 and 8:90.
I got those two. There wasn't one in the middle.
It's under consideration of the tribe.
What do you say?
No, I got them, okay.
The middle was 6:310, which talked about the dual credit enrollment. All those things, so, right. That's in the packets already.
Okay. So I'm sorry to get us slightly out of order, but there was no action required on the board policy. I just wanted to group all that together, so thank you for hearing me out. We do have a first read on the RB Sports Boosters Activity Account.
So I put this in the Friday update, I think it was two weeks ago, where the board, geez, I gotta remember their names because they're not sports. The Sports Booster Club came to me. They are getting near the end of their fiscal year. They have some additional money they would like to donate, but they want to do it towards a specific project. They've been to a couple other schools and they see these video boards that some of the schools have in their gyms and in their stadiums, and they'd like to donate money towards a video board project. They also think this would help with, provide another venue to showcase all the RB TV talent and the hype videos and different things they're doing. So I told them that this was not currently on the administration or board's radar about making a large purchase related to video boards. However, what they asked for was, could I generate a memo of agreement? Not a memo of agreement, but just a memo that would, you know, document and materialize that they're donating this money and they have this money donated for a video board project and...
So a targeted donation?
Targeted donation, and if in three years, their donation doesn't come to fruition, then we would give the money back to the boosters club to identify a different project. And so I talked with Dr. Smetana, I talked with legal counsel. I think as long as we have a letter that materializes what the money's for, we can create an activity account and, you know, we'll have clear guidelines. You know, if this is something the board and the administration are not at a point of looking to do in two to three years from now, they could have the money back if they feel they have more money to donate or sponsor, you know, fully themselves or close to fully themselves, you know. No harm, no foul. I think they're trying to do something good for the school. It was not on our priority list right now and with all the other different things we're working on between solar panels, culinary labs, we have enough projects, so it just wasn't something that was, that we were looking to dedicate capital funds to.
Is a video? Is a video, you know, Ryan, is a video screen popular in athletic gyms?
Yeah, have you never seen a Jumbotron?
I would think it would be so distracting. I don't know, but no?
That's pretty much what it is. It's like a Jumbotron. I think Morton has them, I think Hinzdale had them, I think we participated in a couple...
I had seen a bunch of them, but it's starting.
Yeah, it's starting.
More...
It's really like a digital scoreboard and like when, and a portion of the scoreboard stays up top and a video can be played underneath, or hype video can be played at a timeout or different things. And then what, I think you want to say like Dectronics is usually, who did our scoreboard in the stadium. Actually, Dectronic did both scoreboards, the new scoreboard in the gym and the new scoreboard in the stadium, but they have a partnership agreement where they sell local advertising and the advertising helps pay for the scoreboard.
Hinzdale Central, I know, has one.
Yeah, so I mean...
This is indoor, right? It's indoor.
You can do it either or, but indoor probably be more realistic.
And this is only, the request is to set up an activity account.
It's strictly an activity account, so they can donate that money if they come up with more money, if the district comes up with money for later down the road and we could do a matching program, you know? As a 501(c)(3), they have to give most of their money that they fundraise for or coll... So they need to spend that money, and this is one of the projects they'd like to spend it on or at least donate it towards.
How does the audit, this is a question out of left field, how does the audit take something like this into consideration? Because they're not, they're segregated funds, they don't belong to the district, so would we just exclude them from the audit?
No, they would be included in the audit because they would be, in essence, there are funds at that point.
So do we need more of a formal agreement?
Well, the board would need to, the board will need to officially accept their donation for board policy because it's over the, it's over the threshold. So they'll need to accept it for this as well as the weight room.
So at this point, the request is a first read, and I would anticipate when we get to actually move this up the activity account, we'd have some of that letter of agreement in place.
Yeah.
Am I correct on that?
The letter of agreement will be in place when the donation comes in. Does the board want to see the letter of agreement before they approve the activity account? The letter of agreement, basically, I wrote with the, it just acknowledges that the booster clubs donating this money, X amount of dollars, and they gave me a timeline of three years.
If it's run through legal, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it as long as I know that we're earmarking appropriately.
Did we do that with the scoreboards? I want to say the outside scoreboard was fifty thousand?
Aramark helped donate the money towards that, and inside was Loyola. We did have an agreement with Loyola, but that was in exchange for advertising and some other services. And the weight room project, I don't know if necessarily we'll need board approval because it's not a target, it's the same thing as if they bought uniforms or equipment. I know it's like a $10,000 threshold, but it's not, I think the donation piece is when they're giving a specific donation that they want specific to, a specific program, the board should have done. So I will look back at that policy to see if that's something we have to specifically do for the weight room as well.
Do we know how much they're donating and how much a video board costs?
I do not know how much they're donating. A video board is 50-plus, 38, over 40-plus thousand.
I mean, there's some considerations about installation and structural...
Just curious, I mean, the cap is...
I made very clear to the boosters that, like, this was not something that was, is currently on our radar and that with the culinary lab, the solar panels, the other things that, you know, this is not a priority. If they eventually get to a point where they can fundraise all of it and the board wants to proceed with, you know, maybe to make, to turn around somewhere down the line as the board takes on the maintenance of the project or helps with the installation, great, you know, that's something we can discuss when we get to that.
As long as I'm upfrontly understand what that operations looks like.
Correct. And the letter I will create, the memorandum to, the boosters will be very specific to state that, you know, it was a priority, a project driven by the boosters and the board is not making any formal commitment at this time.
Because that's a really cool gift to receive, but not a really cool, um...
It's not a priority.
Additional project. That's not a priority.
Exactly, that's what I was trying to say.
It's really nice to have.
Absolutely. Like, we could probably identify multiple other things that we would, right?
Exactly, absolutely, yes.
So I, that's why, but I wasn't going to turn down...
No, 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 I think it's incredibly generous and they're wonderful and they work really hard.
I just feel like they gave us another large gift, and I'm trying to go through my mind, and I feel like this has been done before.
It's the weight room.
No, I don't, I don't, historically from like...
They're not giving money for the weight room?
In my last 10 years or so, I don't think, I don't think off the top of my head that we're something... Now, they do like 30 to 50,000 a year, but it's usually five to this team, 10 to this team right now.
Yeah, the booster organization has been extremely generous to this school.
Yeah, that's why it was a positive meeting. I made it very clear that we were appreciative of them and not, you know, I told them I needed to check with legal counsel, I told Kristen, we're just going to check on some things to make sure we can use the activity account, so that's where we're at.
So first read, I think if we could include in, before we approve that letter, I would have a little more understanding of how I think we can answer some of our questions. Is that okay with everyone? Not to say I want to rewrite the letter, but just kind of have some, put some more additional context.
I will put the copy of the letter in the packet in May. I will also have Kristen just verify with the auditor. I believe I sent out eight eighty, but if not, I can put eight eighty in the packet when you approve it.
Or I can look it up.
And that's, those are the only questions I think I'm hearing really tonight, right? I did check with Nikki, I had an email back from Nikki, like, yes, it just needs to be clearly stated in the letter that, you know, documents that it's an optional project, the money will be returned, the board has no obligation to do the project, some things like that.
Right, and I think it's something that would be used for pep rallies, for graduation assemblies, like it's not limited to athletics.
It is not limited to athletics. The, actually, the board, the boosters put in that they really like to do it to highlight all the stuff that RB TV's been doing to highlight their athletic programs and stuff like that, so it aligns with a curricular program, which I think also helps align it to eight eighty, board policy eight eighty.
Okay, so that's a first read, thank you. Also, first read is the PACE program, the FTA assurances.
Did you skip approval contract for transportation?
Oh, I apologize, yeah, I did. Approval of contract for transportation for field trips and athletics.
Dr. Smetana?
This is a first read. Our current one-year contract with First Student for the district's field trip and athletic transportation services are expiring June 30th, 2024. The district's last run out for bid back in May 2016, and we only received one bid, which is from First Student. As a result, you know, we asked First Student to provide extended pricing for the following school year, the one-year extension's a maximum amount of time allowed by statute. So the historical costs are provided by below, along with the updated cost increase for the 24-25 school year. I was surprised to see, I felt like they were very reasonable. I was expecting them to be higher increases, so this is just a first read.
Okay, I don't think we had any questions, but we'll, if anyone has any other questions, you want us on consent next time?
If there's no questions submitted, are the board okay with the consent?
Yes.
Okay. Mary Ann, please make note.
Thank you.
Now, the PACE municipal vehicle.
So this is technically a first read. I am asking for the board to consider approval. I received it earlier this month, and it's due at the end of this month. They didn't provide a lot of time for us to get this done, but earlier this school year, we received two vans for student transportation through PACE. One van is equipped with a lift and can accommodate seven passengers, and that is replacing the function of the old minibus that has a lift the district purchased over 12 years ago. The other van holds 10 people. We put down an initial deposit of $500, and we pay $100 a month through this grant program. But in order to continue to participate in the program every year, we have to have the board adopt this FTA certification and assurances in order to participate in the federal grant program. Once the board approves this form, then legal counsel will sign it because they need the board resolution, and then I'm able to submit it in order to be in compliant with the grant. So this is the second time you've seen it because you saw it last year so that we could participate in the program, and it's something that you will continue to see every spring.
Did legal counsel execute it last year?
They did, yeah.
Okay.
Brian Crowley, once, like I said, once the board approves it, I have to give him the board resolution, and then he goes ahead and signs it, and I submit it.
Is this a document that you have to wait for from PACE, like where we anticipate the formal change every year, or is this something we could just put on our operational calendar to do it in March so it provides you enough time?
Well, we have to get it from PACE.
Okay.
So if we get it in March, we can certainly put it in March, we just missed the March deadline.
Okay. I don't have any objections, go ahead.
I'm having a flashback to, I don't remember if it was a year ago or a couple of months ago, but we had a contract that was insanely long. This is that same thing, right? And detailed to every...
Yes, the first time around, there were like three other things that we had to have the board approve.
Was that a year ago that we did that?
Certification, yes. And this is just, in the program, this is the only thing that needs to be approved every year.
It just took a long...
I'm good with it.
Okay. Any more questions or comments or objections to moving forward on this tonight? Ms. Gasko?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the FTA certifications and assurances as presented in the April 23, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second for Mr. Van Horst, and I think we need a roll call.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Slapp?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Van Horst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Sayless? Yes. And finally, Palms Overnight Trip, July 23rd to the 26th. This is a second read.
So this is an annual trip. Our Board of Education members, our coach, coach chairman, takes about 20 girls to NIU in the end of July, you know, just to help build team camaraderie, you know, learning skills so they could perform well throughout the school year. And again, an annual trip has always worked throughout the last few years, and the board will consider to approve it.
Any concerns or objections from the, from the board? No, go ahead.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the overnight trip for Palms to attend the Universal Dance Association Summer Camp from July 23 through 26, 2024 at Northern Illinois University from July 23 through 26, 2024, as presented in the April 23, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
A second.
Second for Mr. Novak. And a roll call?
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Any additional visitor statements? You guys have stayed for the duration?
I would be watching it at home, so...
Okay.
She's not lying, we're...
We're glad to provide the in-person, having an in-person audience is great. Any discussion items requested? There were none. Consideration of items for future meetings, I took out of order.
Well, okay, so for future, I'll bring, Illinois Association of School Boards announced its open season for resolutions, and we've never done a resolution. And I'll send it to Dr. Skinkis, put it in the Friday packet. I don't know if we want to consider proposing a resolution about possibly considering some waivers on PE when students are doing these dual credit or some of these trade pathways.
We already have it.
Oh, we do have, so they...
Our PE waiver in our board policy allows for one semester for marching band, participation of juniors and seniors in a varsity sport during their season, scheduling conflict if a student needs an additional class for graduation, and then applied arts course or career tech educational course.
But if they were to do the, like, the dual degree or, you know, because when they're moving back and forth to Triton, would that also count?
We've accommodated them.
Okay.